Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and Council meeting, our monthly meeting this October the 3rd, 2017, at 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. We will have our invocation by Councilperson Leslie McPherson, followed by our pleas of allegiance. Please stand.
Lord, I thank you for this evening. I thank you for the beautiful day that we've had, even as we've experienced fall. At the same time, Lord, I know our hearts are heavy with the people that have been hit by natural disasters and then just recently with the actions of evil, basically. God, sometime it's more than we know how to process, but we just ask for protection. We ask for special comfort for those people, that those you send in to assist and help, that you'll just guide them and be there in the healing process. Help us, guide us as we go through the meeting tonight, that we would do well in our dealings with the citizens and the issues that come before us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, it's always a pleasure to me to recognize our loyal employees out there who give us so much. They're the face of our, of this council and the first folks that you folks see out there, the public. So, this is certainly an honor for me, and we are recognizing four employees tonight. And the first one is Robert Francis. And Mr. Francis works for our code compliant, he's a code compliance specialist for code enforcement. And Robert, I'm going to ask that you come up, and then I'm going to get everybody's photo. I'm going to come up front after I do this. The second person is Shelley Faust, and I gave Shelley a hard time, told her she had to limit her speech to 20 minutes. So, Shelley works with our police department and does a tremendous job. She's our IT CID. Now, the CID is what?
Criminal Investigation Division.
Criminal Investigation Division. So, Shelley, if you would come forward too. Our third person is Doyle Bolden, and Doyle has been with us 20 years. Doyle is a lab analyst at the wastewater plant. And I can say that I have worked alongside Doyle for many years. He came on before we had our water reclamation facility and has done a tremendous job for us out there. Doyle, thank you for your 20 years. And last, but certainly not least, is Erin Sims, and I believe Pete is going to accept that. Is Erin here?
Yeah.
All right, okay. Erin Sims is a Class 1 Water Operator License, and she works for a water treatment plant. And Pete, I think this is the person that just recently passed an exam and is our class one. Do you want to come up and say a few words about that?
Yes, thank you. Just a few words. I'm extremely proud, I'm proud to say that Erin just recently was awarded a Class 1 Operator License, which is the highest license that you can achieve in water treatment in the state of Georgia. It's a very rigorous task. She's, she works full-time. She's put in a lot of hours. She's raising a family on top of everything else. And it has really hit the books hard, and was pressured here to get this license. And I'm extremely proud of her about.
Who's our photo taker? We are extremely proud of our employees here in the City of Villarica, and I know you are too. They, again, they're the face of our city, and I couldn't ask for a better group of folks working alongside them for some 14 years, and now as your mayor. It is a pleasure for us to always recognize the hard work that they give us. With that in mind, we have reached the point of the agenda where we adopt the agenda, and I would like to ask that we add, for discussion purposes, the old Head Start Building on Cleacorn Street.
Does it move?
Hold motion a second to add that to the agenda. All in favor?
Where do you want to put it?
Let's add it.
Governor inviting.
You'll make it A2? A2 after the minutes.
That'd be good. Yep, that's where it was before.
Okay, we have a motion a second. All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, council updates.
I have just one. I've been real pleased that we've been able to have something like a farmer's market and craft down here, and I didn't know they wouldn't be here tonight, so I won't have any tomatoes for the rest of the week. So, they may be done for the season, and I didn't, I just didn't know. But, the concern is, I don't think they're being well-supported yet by the community. So, if it's not the desire of the community, we won't have it anymore, and that's my concern. Those people really aren't, I don't think, making enough money for this to continue if we don't have a better turnout. So, I don't know if we need to advertise differently, what it is we need to do, because it really is a nice addition to the mill, to have the crafts and to have the fresh vegetables and everything. So, I just want to throw that out there. Maybe we can brainstorm and come up with a better way to get the word out.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, I would, I brought this up in the work session, and I would certainly like to remind the audience of something very special coming up. We have the vote on the senior tax exemption coming up Tuesday, November the 7th. Most of you know the situation with our senior tax exemption coming off for 2017. It's on the ballot to be voted for, and if approved by the city voters, then it would take effect for January the 1st, 2018. So, please get out and vote. And if you have questions, please contact me on Facebook or by email, or you can, you know, we've got information at City Hall. So, but find out what the vote is, and certainly vote your conviction on that day. And of course, in addition to that, we also have up for election council persons in wards three and five. We had one in Ward four, but Councilwoman McDougal is unopposed. So, that election is also on that ballot on the 7th. So, please get out and vote. I don't care how you vote, quite frankly. I just want you to vote. It's very important. It's important for our city. So, with that said, if there are no other updates, then we have reached the public comments section of our meeting. If you, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and do so. Sign in, state your name and address for the record, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. I've already signed in. My name is Fred Moller. I live at 1092 South Creek Drive, Villarica, Southwoods subdivision. And I'd like to say good evening to you, Mr. Mayor, our honorable city council members, Mr. Barber and Mr. Mecklen. I have been a resident and a taxpayer of Villarica for over 10 years. Over that period of time, I have been asked to represent Southwoods subdivision in Mirror Lake for my neighbors and friends. That's why I'm here this evening. During the past 10 years, there have been only three homes built in our subdivision. Wow. We have enjoyed and become accustomed to quiet streets, clean neighborhoods, and a pleasant environment. We know all that is about to change with D.R. Horton Builders purchasing the lots in Southwoods, and that's why I'm here today. On the agenda is variance 0517, requested by Mr. Shea. Is Mr. Shea in the audience? That's a shame. We are residents, we as residents only ask that Mr. Shea and D.R. Horton honor the variance 0517 as stated by our city council as it pertains to lots 26, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 36, and 37. Wow. We need to preserve our green space in Southwoods. So, I just hope that the Horton Company will honor whatever the request is, or whatever the results are from this city council for the variance 0517. Green space is very important. We also ask that during your construction, D.R. Horton, you respect the neighborhood standards that we have worked so hard to maintain. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Michael Young, 9634 Coastal Point Drive. I also have questions about the two variances from D.R. Horton. I'm wondering, I haven't heard it discussed in the last city council meeting when they tabled this, and when did, when did the new buffer distances come into effect? When did Villarica change the variances? Was it before, or was it after these properties changed hands? The first variance property changed hands October 25th, 2013. So, that was four years ago. The second property, with the bigger variance, the larger number of lots, changed hands on 22 June this year. So, were, did these properties have changes in the buffer requirements on them before or after D.R. Horton took, took over the lots, took title to the lots? That would make a difference to me. If they bought a lot knowing that they were going to have to get a variance in order to do something, that tells me that I don't owe a whole lot to that, that decision, because they knew there was a problem with the property. The other, other question I have is, how much impact is this not, not going to, not putting a house on that going to have, when both lots were transferred for the sum of $10 and other good and valuable consideration? D.R. Horton got those, all of those lots for $10. Well, 20 if you count the two, two titles, 20 bucks. I don't know what the other good and valuable consideration is, and it's not public record to my knowledge, so I don't know how much impact not granting the variance has on them. But it doesn't sound like it has a whole lot. Just a couple of questions I have.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hello, everybody. I am Kurt Kraft, and I'm too tall for this microphone. Here we go. All right, that's better. All right. I'm Kurt Kraft, 2406 Ridge Lake Drive. I'm the chairman of the Villarica Development Authority, and in case y'all didn't know what that was, there's the Downtown Development Authority. It handles everything, obviously, downtown. In our development authority, we handle primarily the factories and businesses that are trying to come in. We're trying to attract jobs, and I'm the chairman of that. If y'all think what happened with Equifax, with the security breach is something, would I tell you what happened with me? On July the 13th, I went up to Russell Cellular, which is an authorized Verizon dealer up here in Villarica, brought in this iPhone, and had problems with it. I couldn't get texts from certain people. Come to find out that it was, I couldn't get it from Androids. One of the salespeople, after 30 minutes, figured that out, wiped my phone, and then downloaded somebody else's information to this phone. I got this, and it was a woman in this area who was a former customer of them. I got her pictures, her texts, her emails. I knew who her contacts were. All that was on this phone. They couldn't wipe the phone, or they couldn't get her information off. This dragged on for two and a half hours. I finally left with the phone. Days, days ensued afterwards, and got no response from Russell, and therefore I hired an attorney, not only to try to reach out to this woman, but also to protect myself, because I didn't know what I was getting into, to be very honest with you. So, I reached out locally and didn't get anywhere. So, I went on my own investigation. I contacted the FBI, the FTC, the FCC, the Better Business Bureau, another Verizon store, Apple Computer, and finally the GBI. I know information now that I really didn't want, it's like when you come down with something, and now you're the expert on what you came down with. That's what I ended up with here. So, the bottom line is, to this day, the only good response I got was from the Better Business Bureau. The person admitted doing it to the Better Business Bureau, and it was just yesterday I noticed, and I'm going to leave copies for the council here, but in here, oh, if I could read that, David. And this is, like I said, I guess different agencies work slow, but the Better Business Bureau said, "The business responded to the dispute, but failed to make a good faith effort to resolve it." So, there you have that. There you go. Thank you, David. And so, therefore, because I only got three minutes, as you can imagine, this is two and a half months of work sitting right here. What I'm asking the council formally is that the GBI investigate this. I think that, from what I've been told, again, is that they have the expertise, they have the staff in cyber things like this, because to be very honest, I have no idea at this point what, where my information is. And why I mentioned the Villarica Development Authority, there were emails of confidential projects that are going on right now that were during that time and before on my email. And when my thing happened, and then the Equifax thing happened, I was like, you know, you know, where is my information? To this day, they won't admit to what happened as far as accurately. Locally, one of our officers went and answered a question, and until I get more information, her reply did not match the reply she gave the Better Business Bureau. So, once again, that's why I'm up here, is to just request a, because, I got the file here.
If you could grab it up, Mr. Kraft.
I'm grabbing it up right now. According to the GBI replied to me, "You would need to speak to your local law enforcement agency about this issue. GBI can only investigate if they are requested at a local level." I have done so, and I think I did in three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's a little scary.
Good evening. John Henneback, 3106 Golfer's Way. I'll let some of Mr. Kraft's time spill over to mine. Mine's very quick. Relates to this variance issue, though, also. And my question is, why did these variances not come before planning and zoning? We have not seen these, had no knowledge of these. So, the variances, why didn't they not come before P and Z? If anybody knows.
Someone from staff will get you that answer, sir. Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. We will begin our agenda, and the first part of that is our consent agenda. For those of you that don't know, a consent agenda is a single item that encompasses all things the city council would normally approve with little commit. Each of these items was discussed at the Thursday, September the 28th, 2017 council work session, and it was unanimous consensus of the governing body to place the following items on the consent agenda. And those three items are, add the addition of a new position for IT Information Technology Coordinator. The second one is addition of a new position for Building Inspector. And the third one is emergency purchase order to replace two failed lift station pumps to avoid spills and loss of customer service. I would entertain a motion to approve those.
Does it move?
Move in a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, it is approved. All right, Tab A, governing body. You have before you, if y'all want to wind up here, by the way, this, I'm still trying to get used to this. This replaced a notebook. I don't, I don't guess we have any, but the notebooks that we used to have for commission meetings was about that thick. And so, not only are we being more conservative and protecting our environment by going paperless, but we also have a chance to make notes on these little devices up here. Councilwoman McDougal, I think, is the only one that really, I can always picture myself, but he's, he needs to give us lessons, or me lessons, anyway. But if you see me kind of fumbling up here a little bit.
I have an appointment.
So, he's, but, but I, thanks to the, to the staff for following through on that request. And Thursday, I looked at Lisa, and I said, "Lisa, did it help you with time?" Because she used to literally spend four days putting our council notebooks together, and she said, "Yes." So, that was, that was the answer I wanted to that question. So, thank you, council, and thank you administration and staff for putting this together. Now, if we can just all get used to this, we'll be doing good. You have before you the meeting minutes of the September the 5th, 2017 monthly meeting, and the special call meeting on September the 22nd, 2017. Have you had a chance to look at those? And if so, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. All right, Tab B, Finance. No, that's right, never mind. You can't read my own writing. Item number two is a discussion of the Head Start Building, and I'm going to ask that our applicant come forward and introduce her concept and what she's asking us for. And then I think staff will have some things they want to add to that as well.
Good evening, city council.
Good evening.
My name is Angela Guyton, and I am trying to lease the building over at 311 Cleacorn, the old Head Start Building. Our intention is to reopen up the school for 18 months to five-year-olds. We are a, I'm sorry. We are, at this point, a for-profit business with the intention at some point to transition to a nonprofit, but that takes a process of time. So, in the meantime, we are for-profit. We are coming with early education and also digital learning to this area. So, that's our reason for being here. We came last month to place it on the council's agenda, and it was tabled over for this month. And so, we're coming back to see what information the city council came up with for us, and then also the information that I obtained from dealing with Caffey as well, who originally owns the building.
Are there any council questions of the applicant?
Not of the applicant. I will give a presentation from staff.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
And we may have questions for the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
I've got one question. Excuse me, one question, Mr. Mayor. From a timing standpoint, I mean, the city at some point in time may have need for the property that you're wanting to lease from the city. How much time would you need advance notice from the city that we may need the property back?
Well, that's kind of difficult to answer at this moment, because it's a school, meaning that we would have to be able to locate another building, and then we would have to uproot the students to another location, and that mean informing the parents as well that we will have to be moving to another location. And then we have to come back to the city to see if there's another vacant building that meets the zoning qualifications and bright from the starts qualifications to allow us to access that building as well. So...
Does your, does your school year follow the normal school year?
Yes, it will follow the normal school process.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, ma'am. We may have some more questions, so. Mr. Barber.
So, we, we spoke on the phone, and then I called Caffey to talk to one of their reps. I spoke with a young lady named Sherry and explained the situation. She was only able to tell me that she would pass the information on to their board of directors. So, the prospect of us negotiating sort of committee to committee, a land lease, doesn't seem like a very speedy endeavor. But that, I think that's where we're headed. Given the fact that I think the applicant has a, a desire for a long-term arrangement, I think that while we're in the process of making that determination about the lease, the land lease, and how that works out with the building lease, is that we go ahead and, and look for another facility for the applicant, because in the long run, that seems to be a better solution than maybe being in that building a year or two, and then having to uproot and either not find a building, or find a building that's a significant distance from where her students are coming from. So, that's, that's my recommendation to council, is that we pursue both options, that we look into doing a land lease to see if we can get the Caffey building to work, but that we also look into what else is available, if there is anything that meets that bright from the start set of requirements.
Okay. And just to kind of frame this, for those of you that may not know what we're talking about here, the applicant has asked for a contract on what used to be the Head Start Building on Cleacorn Street. That building, the land that that building sits on belongs to the City of Villarica. The building was leased to Caffey, who ran the Head Start program several years ago. That Head Start Building, it hasn't been, I don't know when exactly it closed, but it's been several years since it's been open. And so, her request is a little bit cumbersome. We can't approve it, because the original contract, which basically gave Caffey the, the go-ahead to open that Head Start program, our agreement was with Caffey. And so, that's where the complication comes in. The contract changes. We would not have a contract, we would still have a contract with Caffey, but Caffey would administer the lease on it, as I understand it. Is that correct?
That's right.
So, therein lies the problem.
And, and the difference was, Caffey, which is actually Community Action for Improvement, is a nonprofit organization that was designed, developed to run Head Start programs. And Ms. Guyton mentioned that she is not a nonprofit, and that, that makes a difference to us.
Any other discussion?
Well, I like the idea that we've maybe come up with another location or look to see, because from listening to Ms. Guyton, you don't want to uproot your school. And because that building is on our property, and we know that we might need that within the next couple of years, that would complicate, complicate it for you too. So, I like the idea that we at least have some other options to look at.
This is a question of staff and our city attorney. Is it reasonable to think that we would have something by the November meeting, and we could...
I don't know.
Yeah, it's hard, hard to answer that question, because we were talking about going out and finding another building somewhere, and...
I don't know what their board schedule is either.
Okay, then can we, so that our applicant knows when she should come to the meeting and not come to the meeting, can someone from staff get in touch with her and let her know when we do have that information? So, what I'm hearing is that we don't have a timeline, because we're dealing with a board, a volunteer board. Is that correct? Tom? Probably.
I don't know. Do you know if Caffey's board, they're volunteers?
They are volunteers, and they're scattered, scattered out all over the whole West Georgia area. I mean, it's not a localized board. They have, they have people spread out in a number of different communities.
Okay.
Just a question. Who owns this big cement block building on 78?
Just a question, who owns this big cement block building on 78?
Ryan Clark.
Private individual.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I know it's a private individual, but the question is, who owns it? That may be an option to, well, those folks look at, not us.
Any other comments? We've already closed that portion, sir. Unless the council wishes to open that back up. Do we have?
I don't mind.
Okay, come forward, sir.
Yeah. Took the time to come.
Thank you for allowing me to come up. My name's Darrell Powell. I'm Ms. Guyton's husband. I'm kind of not overly involved in this, but I kind of know what's going on. I happen to have grown up here. So, the idea of this school particularly is the neighborhood itself. It's a slum and blight type of looking issue for this particular neighborhood. It's a low-income neighborhood. And so, the efforts to bring such a product to this particular area could help advance the community at large. We just left from Ms. Brooks's thing over here at Glanton Heisman, and they have the lab ready, but we don't have the three-year-old child, four-year-old child getting ready from this particular area with less income, less access to digital literacy, to go to the school and be ready to compete. So, it's not just the issue of the building itself. I think it's the people, the locale, and the income bracketing that would be of more assistance, not only to just the students, but to Villarica at large. Times are changing. My wife's from California, Berkeley, so a lot is changing in terms of digital literacy. And these students, they need to be ready. They need to be ready to compete 20 years from now. They are our future. So, if we leave them behind and we become a social issue here inside of Villarica, competing for money, less jobs, then we might be looking at something different 20 years from now. So, I think that's the idea of looking forward. We know you all have plans for the land. We'd be willing to try to do something with that. If you want to sell us the lot that the building is on, maybe that's something we could do. But that's what I wanted to say.
And I want to say this too, sir. There's not a person up here, an elected official or staff person, that doesn't believe that what you're doing is very noble, and we see the need for that. But we have an obligation to make sure it's done correctly and legally, so that's, that's where we're at.
Understood, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to come forward in public comments? The lady that, what can lay one, ma'am, do you want to...
That's not, that is not kind.
That's my wife, y'all.
You know...
She said, "That's not funny," by the way.
See, we're not deciding whether there's a need there or not. We recognize there's a need. The problem is, you need the location, but if we were, for instance, to run a road through there, that's a problem for the city. So, that's what we're, that we're trying to resolve that along with location and the fact that one entity owns the building, but we own the land. Sorry to have to make you come so many times, too. It's, it's a little complicated and gets drawn out over a number of meetings, but thank you.
Thank you, councilperson. All right, tab B, finance. I don't see Sarah, sir.
Sarah is at the Georgia GFOA conference, and will be back Thursday.
So, are you going to give her a financial report?
I was not planning to. I've, I've seen it, but I've never, I've never tried to present it.
Is there anything you'd like to bring our attention to on it?
Is there anything different than last Thursday?
No.
You did hear it Thursday.
So, water and sewer didn't get in the black since then, or?
No, we're working on it, though.
I would also make a comment and zone here. You know, I think, I understand that our staff has, have other things to do, but I would certainly, if there's an agenda item that's on here, I would like for a staff person to be here to talk about it, or in lieu of that, would like for you to do that. So, I think that our, the council deserves that, and I think the citizens want to see that as well. So, just a broad sweeping comment.
Mr. Mayor, also, we can reference to the public, since they were not here, or many of them were not here for the work session, that the financial report as presented by the, by Sarah is online, and they can, they're welcome to read it, because that's how she presents it, is through the written financial report, if, if anyone in the public's interested in it.
Just for fun.
Okay. Moving on to tab C, community development. First item up is variance, VA dash 04 dash 17, variance request from Sean P. Shea, comma, D.R. Horton Incorporated. Is the applicant present?
Did come in.
Representative applicant.
Okay, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hi, Chris Cole, D.R. Horton, 8800 Roswell Road, Sandy Springs, Georgia. My name is Chris. Sean is not available this evening, and so, myself and Jonathan Davis are in attendance. Jonathan, I believe, met with some staff members earlier in the week to discuss this particular application. I walked in a little bit late and didn't hear the beginning statements that were originally announced during the public comment. But this is a situation where we're a home building company, we're, we're buying lots out here. We discovered that there were some issues related to these lots, and my understanding was there were some discussions that had taken place early on in our due diligence process and some expectations set. And those expectations had changed after we had purchased the lots, and so, we're just trying to figure this out. I think the main point here was, the final plat had been recorded in 2004, and I think your ordinance had changed in 2006, which ultimately led to the requirement of these variances. And based on some information that we saw, there's probably some, you know, some homes that are existing that are in the same situation that we're proposing on these particular lots. And if you have any further questions, I'm here to answer them, and again, we're here to try and get this worked out.
I do have some, some comments. First of all, I think that answers one question that was asked by, in public comment, but what the neighbors did get up and speak about was their concern that you would come in and maintain their level of privacy to the extent that you can during the building process. These are established neighbors that have been here since when it began, and I would certainly like to read, put that in the minutes and read that into the record, that, that we, as elected body, would expect that of you, and hope that, to the extent possible, that you observe all of their rights as neighbors, including when you're going to start construction, in the morning, when you're going to end in the evening, according to all our codes, and that you just respect their privacy and their, their rights in the neighborhood.
Yes, we will do that, and there's a set of covenants that we have to abide by as well, that help respect and preserve the value of the community. And quite frankly, that's one of the reasons that we're interested in it, because we would expect the same thing from anybody else. And I'll take it a step further, and we'll make ourselves available to meet with residents of HOA as, if there are issues. We're going to respect the ordinances. And again, you know, if there's something that we are not doing, that we're supposed to be doing, we try and step up and have conversations with those who are concerned and with the surrounding stakeholders. This is, we've been doing this for a long time, and especially recently coming out the most recent recession, we've been involved in a lot of these vacant developed lot communities. And the great thing is, we've made some mistakes, and we've learned some things, and we've improved on it. So, now, we're a little better educated as we go into some of these communities.
Glad to hear you say that. And those individuals are here in the room, and one of them's wearing an ugly shirt right now that says Georgia Tech on it. So, I would love for you to stick around, and maybe after the, the meeting, you could get with them and, and answer some of their questions and start that process. I think that's the main thing, if it gets approved, that we, we start the process off right and continue. And so, anybody else? Mr. Barber?
As we discussed Thursday night in work session, it appears that the, the history of these properties suggests that the ordinance that established these two buffers indeed were approved by council after the properties were platted, which creates a grandfathered condition for those properties. My take on this at this point is that whether we had to technically require the applicant to apply for a variance is a question in my mind, and maybe the city attorney can help me with that. But if we knew that this was a grandfathered condition, do we still go through the process of a variance? Is that required, or is that just...
No.
Exceeding caution on the P and Z department?
If this was, if the order of a plat approval came before the change in the ordinance, yeah, it, it would have created a vested right based on the conditions when it was approved. And I would agree, when, when they came, when they came in, they should have been told that they already had the right to do it.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate that we're not talking about the state buffers. That question came to me. All we're talking about here is the additional Villarica buffers that came into effect in 2006.
Correct.
About two years after these properties were platted and approved.
Mm-hmm.
So, the truth is that they probably should never have come before us to begin with.
Right.
But here we are.
Correct. I, I would agree with that. That's the correct legal conclusion.
Right. The, the practical concern that I have is, you've got a couple of these that sit feet from the state buffer, which you can't disturb. So, to me, that, that's your, that's your bigger technical issue, is how do you build a house that's got a corner of the, of the structure that's three feet from the buffer and never get in the buffer? So, if you can do that, you got, you got Mr. Georgia Tech back here shaking his head at you, so.
They could be watching, too.
You know, what they're concerned about are, you know, significantly, a significantly mature group of trees that run along that creek that they, that they'd like to see maintained, you know? And, and that's more than just knocking into the trees. That, that, you know, involves the root system and how, you know, how close you get with the equipment. And so, I think if you can work with them, you know, you could have a good project here. I know these are tough lots to build on, so if they were the best lots, they'd have been built on first, and they're not. So, good luck.
And I want to say this too, because it was mentioned, and we don't respond to public comment directly, but I do agree that anything that's, that's a variance to a planning and zoning issue should go before P and Z before it comes to this council. So, you know, I, I guess I'll take ownership of that. But we have, you know, hopefully, we're going to get a stable staff here fairly quick. Janet came and then left, and so, we will get a stable staff here, and we will get back on task and make sure that all things are done that way. So, we will also have a city engineer for the first time in the city's history, as far as I know, anyway. There hasn't been one here since 2001. I know that for a fact. So, that's, that's going to help with the process and hopefully lend some, some well-deserved or well-needed expertise in some of these areas that we deal with. So, excited about the, the future prospects.
I would like to know, is it your explanation as to the reason why it never did go before P and Z?
That, I don't know that for a fact, probably. I mean, I really don't know, but it shouldn't have ever, it shouldn't have gone to P and Z, because it shouldn't have ever come before y'all, as a variance request to begin with.
It's already approved.
How would we handle that? Do we want to still try to vote on that, or do we want to...
If it doesn't require it, it doesn't make sense for us to vote on it.
Right. I don't know that we need to have a, a vote on approving a variance that's not really needed. I think it might be appropriate, however, based on my recommendation to you, that I believe that they already have the vested rights in the buffers that existed when the subdivision was platted for you to formally vote, that, that they have vested rights and that as, as it existed when the subdivision was planted.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
It's related to the fact that, maybe the fact that we don't have the stability in that department, and it's caused this confusion. Did they not have to pay a fee to ask for this variance? And if so, if it's our fault because of our lack of stability in that department, that the ball got dropped, should we not be obligated to refund that fee?
Do you know if there was a fee charged?
Sure, there was a fee charged. I don't know what it was.
Tom, can you run that down? I think that's a very, very good point.
I, I agree with that as well.
And maybe an apology, too, for getting our act together.
More of a couple.
One, one other point, just even though we don't respond to public comments, I think it was, it struck me that I wanted to correct the record for anybody else who might be sitting out there in the audience who's concerned. The fact that the deed said $10 and other good and valuable consideration is not a reflection of what the purchase price with was. Virtually every deed is always going to say $1 and other good and valuable consideration, or $10, or $100, because you're not required to show what the actual purchase price of a lot is on the deed. And it's common and customary to use that bland language. One way you can tell is to look on the transfer tax, though, and you can figure out how much was paid for the lot.
Okay, David, here's a $64,000 question now. Do we need to public comment on this, or is this just...
No, you don't need a public comment. I mean, this is, it's a legal matter. Tom was exactly right. It is a vested rights determination, which is a determination that doesn't require any type of public comment.
I will move to approve the VA dash 04 dash 17. We're going to take them one by one ourselves.
Yeah, let me, let me amend the motion, that I think the motion should be that you remove these two items from the agenda, because the legal determination has been made that they already have vested rights to follow the 2004 approval.
Okay. I amend my motion to remove items one and two, which the two variances requested from the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion? If not all in favor? Unanimous. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, I know about the public comment, but what is the 2004 pledge recommendation I'm looking for?
Mr. Barber will get, can you get that information? We'll get that to you, sir. That's okay. Okay, moving on to item number three, which is a alcohol beverage license for Luther's Bistro. It's ABL dash 06 dash 17. Is the applicant present? State your name and address for the record, and tell us what you want to do.
My name is Adam Anderson, 901 South Carroll Road, Luther's Bistro. Say, I'm Mr. Luther. We just changed the names. We took it out of the nonprofit over to a profit, so we had to change it from the charity. So, I had to put it into my name, and by doing that, we had alcohol, wine and beer, so we're just now here trying to reestablish it to get those customers back.
And might I say that you have one of the best steaks I've ever ate?
Thank you very much.
Selfless, non-promoted advertisement for you.
And he cooked it.
I did hear, though, I want to just add something to what the applicant said, is a question, just, I want you to confirm this, is that you've had customers that have actually walked into the restaurant, and when they found out they couldn't order wine with their steak or whatever they were ordering, they turned around and left. Is that...
By the dozen, Mr. Mayor. By the dozen.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant?
I would make a motion that we approve.
Well, I think we need to see, we have to have a hearing. We have to do public comment.
I don't think that there were any type of objections listed, but it never hurts to accept public comment if anybody hasn't.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the applicant? Okay, if not, sir, we're going to, we'll have public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak for or against, you can go ahead, sir. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this alcohol beverage license, please do so. Okay, seeing none, the discussion reverts back to the council for swift action.
I'll make a motion...
Hold on a second. The only complaint I got with this whole bunch is they quit serving breakfast.
So, you, would you like me to add that to the motion?
Before you make the motion...
Go ahead, go.
Hang on, you may want to just hang on to this, man.
Before he makes the motion, you need to read something to him.
He's already been, that's already been done. That's already been done. No, but that's already been done, as far as reading the concept.
Let me make a motion that we approve this alcohol beverage license for Luther's Bistro.
Second.
Have a motion second, discussion? Not all in favor? It is unanimous. And David, would you read our... would you read our statement to the applicant?
You have served alcohol before, so you're familiar with the ordinance that requires that you're only serving to people over age. And you understand that the city police department runs sting operations all the time and is going to be trying to get your employees to not follow the process. But I'm confident that you understand that and will obey the law.
Yes, sir.
I believe the question was asked today about when he could get his license, tomorrow in the morning?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Tab D, Chief Mansour or...
Or maybe a captain.
Is captain going to do this, or chief? Stand up. Oh, he is standing up. Never mind.
No.
I'm sorry. I couldn't help it. It's just...
That's a cheap shot.
I couldn't see him back there.
No, he was sitting. I have three people.
Got a stepping stool, so I can't see him.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a request for us to use money that was already budgeted for other equipment to use to purchase police detective vehicles. And the money was from the accounts, as you see in your packets. We have spoken to our Ford dealership and have spoken to him about two different vehicles. One's a Ford Fusion 2016 with 26,000 miles. One's a Ford Escape 2014 with 31,000 miles. Both of them are certified pre-owned, which means there's a 12-month warranty, as well as a 100,000-mile powertrain warranty on them.
And Chief, what would these two vehicles be used for? I believe you're replacing two vehicles now that are high mileage, 2010?
Correct. We'll be using them for detectives. And those vehicles will be used for officers to drive, the old vehicles will be used for officers to drive it, to training, and for the administration to use to, like, go to bank and stuff like that.
Okay, so you'll be holding on to the old ones?
We will be holding on to the old ones for now. Correct.
You know how we have that plan of how many vehicles we were going to do per year? Does this, like, put us ahead of the game because you had some budget money to move? It does.
These are cars for the detectives, so they don't...
The others are all the patrol vehicles. Okay.
Also, Mr. Coach Best, I do have those numbers that you requested for the detectives' take-home cars and how far they drive them. So can I present those to you?
The question that I had the other day, and the reason this is on this, instead of the consent agenda, was the question that, when it said "pre-owned," I was to the understanding that meant it was individually owned and was traded in. And that's not the issue. These are program cars. Correct?
I cannot answer that.
I did. I did. I called to make sure. And these are program cars, which meant that somebody from Ford dealership, high-level places, just drove them around and whatever. They were not individuals on the street that drove these cars.
Okay.
So I just want, and that was the reason I wanted to make sure in our meeting tonight, that everybody understands that we don't go out and take individually-owned cars and make police cars out of them.
Correct.
Thank you.
I commend you on doing a good job, because we're basically getting two vehicles here, a Fusion and an Escape, for a total of $29,750.
Correct, yes.
I move to approve this approach.
Can I ask just one other? Aren't the detectives, excuse me, sorry, aren't the detectives on call?
Yes, ma'am.
So wherever they are, they may have to get to a scene.
They do have to respond. Especially on a major event, they come out, all of them come out. If we have a major event, they all come out. Yes, ma'am.
But if we have a minor event, Captain Shaddis comes out.
There's always one that's on call, but several times this past year, everybody's came in.
And we never want that to happen again, but we understand that that's not possible. So any other questions of staff? I think I heard a motion.
Yes.
Go ahead, second. Have a motion second. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Was that a yes?
Okay.
Head shake.
Now, let me navigate back to the main page. Okay, Tab E, Parks, Recreation and Leisure Services. Ms. Coleman?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The item that I have before you is concerning the Nugget Drop Fireworks Display Contractor Recommendation. This is in the amount of $4,000. As you know, the department hosts its annual fireworks display, and this year, we put out to bid this contract. We got two respondents back. The respondents were East Coast Pyrotechnics Inc. and J&amp;M Displays. What you have in your vendor packet, these are, excuse me, the bid comparison sheets for what was submitted. We have J&amp;M Displays at 3,010 total shells in the inch-and-a-half to two-inch range with 1,680 for East Coast Pyrotechnics. Staff is making a recommendation for the approval of J&amp;M Displays. Just to give you a little bit of background, this is what would be my third Nugget Drop, and specifically, probably my fifth fireworks display event. This is a new recommendation of a vendor. I will tell you that there's a little bit of history, which is why this is kind of becoming the first time that this vendor is being recommended. Just so you have an understanding there, I would probably say that as staff, we probably had, there was a little bit of pause for the first couple of years. We're beyond a window of time, if you will, where this particular vendor, they did have an incident at where they had an issue with a display, but they came back the following year and had to redo a display for a customer, if you will. That is outside of the window. And I'm bringing it up that this is my third year, coming up on doing a third year of the Nugget Drop. So now that we're at a time, like I said, I had a little bit of pause, but now that, you know, we're beyond a window of time, I'm making a recommendation on this particular vendor. I think certainly that if you look at what the value that is being proposed, that it's certainly worth the city staff making a recommendation for city council to consider approving this contract.
Looks like they actually had quite a few more shells and larger shells. Is that right? I'm not an expert on these things, but I looked at the comparison...
That is correct.
...shape that you had. Okay.
Ms. Coleman, I had a couple of some questions on it. Notice, looking at the comparison of the two companies, J&amp;M Displays and East Coast Pyrotechnics, it appears that the largest number of extra shells were in the opening barrage, which they had, J&amp;M Displays had 349 shells, two or one and a half inch in size, and then in the body of the program, which is the main part of the program, they had 198 two-inch shells. Have you talked to the fire marshal to make sure we could shoot two-inch shells off the top of the Avanti building next door?
This is the same specs. I haven't had a new conversation this year, but these are essentially the same specs that go out every year. And as far as I'm aware, it's capped at two inches for this location. So we haven't modified, if you will, the previous specs. So that is my understanding of the size limit cap.
So the fire marshal has approved the use of two-inch shells in a close proximity show, which is what this is?
Correct. And these are, again, the same standards that have been used at this particular site. We didn't modify or increase the size of the shells for the mill.
We can verify that again, Mayor.
Well, I would say that the mayor has a lot of experience with these fireworks shows, so I'm waiting to hear if he knows something different. But just looking at what I've been presented, it looks like the J&amp;M Displays has a lot more shells and some larger shells. It looks like it's hard not to go with them.
Better value.
And twice the liability insurance.
Yes. And so that everyone understands, this is, again, I guess the same specifications that have gone out for the last several years under what has been permitted. So...
Both companies met the minimum requirement for liability, correct?
That is correct.
I have reviewed the contract also, and it looks in an acceptable form.
I'm ready to make a motion that we approve, but do we want to wait and find out that question on the fire marshal? Or would you, would there be, would there be another, I guess, setup if that didn't, if there was an issue with the two-inch, without you having to come back here? What would we recommend? Just approving it? David?
Yes, I think you just need to approve it. And if there is a problem, which doesn't sound like there is, but...
I agree. Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve the Nugget Drop fireworks display for J&amp;M.
Second.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, David, do we have any thing that we need to go in the executive session for?
I don't have anything.
Mercy purchase?
Yeah, we do that on the center.
Okay, hearing no executive session, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn. So move.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor? We are adjourned. And Chris Pike is in the back of the room and didn't have a PowerPoint presentation.
I think you need to get to work.
It's close.
Yeah.
Did I do good?
Hey, I'm doing good. Doing good.